Mr. Petch, if we could call the order, please.
Commissioner Eggleston?
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Here.
Commissioner Ruland?
Here.
Chair Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Crandall? Commissioner Wu?
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith?
Here. There are no special order business tonight. Our next order business will be the approval of the minutes and the minutes from the study session of February 10th, 2016. Is there any changes or is there a motion to approve?
I have two corrections I'd like to make. One is on page five, second to the last paragraph under straw votes. It reads prohibit all STLUs in residential low, residential very low, and residential medium. I think we need to strike the term residential medium as that wasn't part of the vote. It was just under residential low and very low.
Did you review the tape on that or you're certain on that?
I'm certain on that. That's how we were voting for residential low.
I think it is intended to say residential medium-low, right?
Yeah.
So it should be medium-low?
Mm-hmm.
So low, very low, and medium-low.
Correct.
And the other one is on page six, second paragraph. In the vote, we say there was an option two to allow STLUs in residential medium, but then later on, we say specifically prohibit STLUs in residential medium. I'm guessing that was actually residential medium-low as well. It reads, let me read it, says third straw vote on option two to allow STLUs in residential medium, residential high, and all mixed-use zones with additional language to specifically prohibit STLUs in residential low, residential very low. And it reads residential medium zones. I assume you mean residential medium-low zones.
Medium-low.
Okay. So those two, those two changes, residential medium to residential medium-low in those two places.
Okay. Any other changes? That'll entertain and approve the minutes as corrected?
If not, I'll move that we approve those minutes as corrected.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass the seven, zero. And then the next minutes from the study session of February 17th, which I was absent, so is there any corrections to the February 17th?
I will move we accept the minutes of February 17th.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And with Chair Brown recusing. Was, were you absent also?
Yes, I was absent for the studies. Not, not for the, I was for the study session itself, not for the, not for the discussion of the public hearings.
Huh?
I missed the study session.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we are clear on that vote? What else we have to approve? Okay, now we have the regular minutes for February 17th. Are there any corrections for that?
If there are no corrections, I will move that we accept the minutes of February 17th.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then I recuse. We don't have any minutes on that yet. When the meeting you were absent from? Come soon. Okay, we have oral and written communication. Members of the audience may address the Commission on Matters of Public Interest which are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentations. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Is there anybody for the, for oral, written, and communication? No cards? No, it's everything other than on the agenda. There is nothing on our consent calendar. Public hearing tonight, we have zoning amendment 15-426 Pacific Plan 16072, short-term lodging units by Mr. Atamian.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Good evening, planning commissioners. Adam Atamian. Tonight, staff is requesting that this item be continued to the March 16th Planning Commission meeting. This is due to the short timeframe and turnaround to produce an ordinance that is appropriately reviewed and presented. However, the, this being a meeting, staff feels that if the commission would like to use the time to discuss any outstanding issues or to provide staff direction on additional information that they'd like to see in a staff report, we would greatly appreciate that input tonight. But as far as the item itself, we would request that it be continued to March 16th.
Okay. Do I have a motion to continue to March 16th?
Mr. Chairman, what I would like to do is to have an opportunity for us this evening to discuss one item, actually two items with regard to this, and that is the home sharing and bed and breakfast, and also gets further clarification on home exchanges.
That's pretty broad-ended. Do you have specific bounds on this?
Well, I'd like to consider that we, instead of home sharing, we already have a provision in our planning to allow bed and breakfasts. And when you take a look at the definitions of home sharing and bed and breakfasts, they're very similar. And so what I would like to do is for us to consider allowing bed and breakfasts in residential medium and residential high this side of the freeway.
So that's what you want the discussion on, is bed and breakfasts, residential medium and high in the west of the five?
And further clarification on home exchanges from staff.
Do I have a second for this motion at all?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of discussing B and Bs allowed in residential medium and high west of the five? And you want further clarification on, from staff?
On home exchanges.
Home exchanges. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carry seven, oh. So you'd like to start a discussion then on your motion of, or you're proposing to allow in lieu of home exchanges everywhere, bed and breakfasts west of the five and the residential medium and high zone?
Right, exactly.
Any second, you have a discussion of who would, okay, your light's on. In lieu of home sharing everywhere, is that right?
In lieu of home sharing.
I second the discussion.
Okay, I understand. But your light was still on.
I like to discuss about it.
Okay, because your light was on, that's why I turned to you. Oh, now your light's off, okay.
Was it ever really on?
It was.
Are you sure?
You just turned it off! All right. Commissioner Eggleston, you have your lights on, you'd like to talk about it or you're off?
Well, I just wanted to refer to the information that has been given to us with regard to staff. And on seventeen point two eight point zero nine zero, it talks about bed and breakfasts. And we're getting some, this is the same information that was on the?
Yeah.
Okay. And when you read through it, it really seems like home exchanges. I've known people in the past that have done home sharing here in San Clemente in the years past, and I've asked them if they provide any type of food service. And the ones that I have talked to said, yes, they provide breakfast at least with, if it's coffee or rolls or whatever, in the morning. And that's part of what bed and breakfast is, and that's probably a little different from what is in the, the home sharing definition. Because home sharing, it says the property owners residing on site during the entire short-term period, which bed and breakfast is doing. The property owner must also own and operate the home share, which they do here under home, under bed and breakfast. It's for a short-term basis. Home share does not apply to lodging units with multifamily dwelling structures unless the homeowner resides in a unit being rented as home shares. Multiple dwelling units containing six or more STLUs, whether or not under individual separate ownership for this type of considered hotels. And so when you, when you take a look at the definition here of bed and breakfast inns, it's pretty complete. I'm not suggesting that we do bed and breakfast inns with conditional use permits, however. I am suggesting that they have a thorough review by the zoning administrator, and certainly staff should go out and take a look at these on an individual basis. Obviously, the person who's applying for the bed and breakfast inn should be paying for that type of permit process and review. But I think it's important for us to have this down to more definitive definition rather than having two definitions of one, one of bed and breakfast inns and one of home sharing, when in fact, they're essentially the same. And I'm suggesting that they do it only in the residential medium and residential high in the areas of the side of the freeway.
In the coastal overlay, so to speak, for our land use plan for the Coastal Commission?
Excuse me, would you say that again?
I'm suggesting that the bed and breakfast units be permitted in residential medium and residential high on this side of the freeway.
This side?
This side.
Wait a minute.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Always, since I, yes, the east side of the freeway, thank you.
You're talking the coastal side.
The coastal side.
Thank you.
Coastal.
West of the five.
Well, that's different, it's the west side.
It's either east or west, everyone gets it confused, so it's coastal zone.
You're saying you're okay with this in residential one or just?
No, no, that's not what I said. Residential medium or residential high.
West of five.
West of five.
And currently, it's only east of five?
It's allowed east, east of five.
Why just residential?
Commissioner Smith?
I'm sorry. It's your light, Michael, please.
Yeah, I was trying, I didn't know if Michael was finished.
Well, unfortunately, I missed the last study session, but apparently, all of a sudden, we've got two new forms of apparently short-term vacation rooms. And I gotta protest that. I think that this house sharing, as Wayne is describing it, is essentially bed and breakfast. I can't see any difference. And that hasn't been on our agenda at all, and I'm not sure that this category is an appropriate category for our discussion. I feel like it's an addition that isn't necessary right now, and so I've got a problem with it. And I'm trying to stay focused on what we're trying to do here, which is address short-term rentals, which is something different than bed and breakfast. Secondly, home exchanges are home exchanges, and they are not short-term rentals. And I protest that now they are on the agenda as short-term vacation rentals, which they're not.
Just to clarify, maybe for the record, we discussed that in the last meeting, maybe you didn't have a chance to review the video, but the city staff recommended home sharing throughout the city in addition to allowing STLUs in the mixed-use zone, the pure zone, and the mixed-use one, two, around the pure, around the T-zone, and, and five point O. And so that was home sharing. They, city planner had, had communication with the Coastal Commission, which indicated they might be amenable of that. So on a vote of six oh, on the last meeting, we said, okay, go forward with that.
I just, listen here, but for the record, I protest, I don't think it's appropriate.
Okay, so you put it. Mr. Wu?
I think it's important to, to consider the definition of all these uses, bed and breakfast inns, home share, home exchange, lodging units, short-term lodging units and hotels, so we can get a complete understanding and craft some watertight language to cover everything, there's no loophole, there's no minimal overlap. But I think to change the permitted use of bed and breakfast inns in the area west of Interstate five is not agendized, is probably not a good time today to talk about it. So I will...
By a vote of, he made a motion and you second to, in fact, to discuss it or to agendize it.
Okay, well, I will, from my comment on the definition of these terms, based on the letter I received today, an hour or two before the meeting, on the first item, bed and breakfast inns, it seems like we changed the definition. We added at least two lodging units into the definition. So my question to staff is, can bed and breakfast inns have one renting, one unit only? If they have one, then, then what is it?
If they have one, then they would basically just be a home share.
No, no, I would disagree. I think the difference between bed and breakfast inns and, and home sharing is that bed and breakfast will serve meals. It really doesn't matter. The prior definition doesn't say it's at least two lodging units. It can be anywhere from, it's underneath five. Beyond five, six or more, it becomes hotel. Underneath five, it's a bed and breakfast in. So that, really, what makes a lodging building bed and, bed and breakfast in, it is for two things. First, it requires whole owner occupancy. Secondly, they serve meals. I think that, that makes, because the name suggests it, a bed and breakfast. So if we, if they don't serve meals, then maybe it falls underneath the STLU or home share. Well, home share also require homeownership. So, no, to, to put all these definitions together and try to, try to make them knit together, I'm thinking for all the short-term lodging units, for example, if we ask the question, first question, is owner occupancy required? If it's required, then it's either bed and breakfast or home share. If it's not required, then it's either hotel or STLU, depending on the number of units. If owner occupancy is required, then depends on if a meal is served or not, it becomes either in, better B and B, or home share. Home share has additional restriction that there's only one rental agreement. And at the same time, it's a special type of STLU. Maybe that way, we can make the definition a little tighter related together.
Yeah. So if I can respond to a couple of things that you said, the definition of two or more is just, is really a clarification on the existing definition, which says that rooms, plural, will be rented. Bed and breakfasts can have, there's no limit on the number of bedrooms, but if they're five or more, then in some zones, they only require a minor conditional use permit. Six or more, they require conditional, full conditional use in all zones where they're allowed. The ownership of STLUs, right now, the way it's, it's written is that you have to own the property in order to qualify it as a home share. Whereas a bed and breakfast, you don't have to technically own the property, but CCNRs need to be placed on that property to restrict the use, consistent with the standards in the current zoning ordinance. So you would really have a, you know, a serious interest in the property, you know, to go through that, that type of process. So I think you're gonna be dealing with either way, two very interested individuals that are, that are owning these, these properties.
But your definition of bed and breakfast in says a structure where, wherein the owner of the property lives, that is owner occupancy.
Could I interject something here?
Just a minute, are you done now, are you through? Okay.
Well, we can take a pause.
Okay, just a minute. Go ahead.
Well, it says for bed and breakfast here, that, I disagree with you. It says the operator, it says the operator of the, of the inn shall reside on the premises. The operator shall be an owner of the property, and the inn shall be the operator's permanent legal residence. So that's a bed and breakfast. And under home share, it says the property owner must also own and operate the home share. So it's the same, is it not?
The difference is the meal, whether the meal is served or not.
Well, no, I know, the difference is the meal, but you were saying that they're different as far as if they don't, someone was saying that they don't have to live on the property, the owner doesn't have to live on the property. But here, it says the same.
No, I apologize, you're, you're right about that.
Okay.
Both require owner.
Clarify, we're clear on that?
Owner occupancy.
The difference is the meal.
Well, there's, the difference is...
There's two differences, right?
Yeah, there's, the number of independent rental agreements that you can have on a piece of property changes between a bed and breakfast and an STLU. In an STLU or a home share, you can rent to one person, you can have one rental agreement at a time. In a bed and breakfast, you could have as many as, as a, as a house will hold. There's no actual limit on it. It says six or more, requires conditional use permit. If you have a house that has 20 bedrooms, you could potentially have 20 individual rental agreements going on at the same time.
I think the B and B is restricted to less than that, because then it becomes a hotel above six.
No, B and, B and B and a hotel, they can overlap. If, if a B and B has six lodging units or more, by the definition of hotel, it becomes hotel at the same time.
Right.
Yeah, for tax purposes, if it's five or more, it would be taxed similarly to a hotel. But for zoning purposes, we still would allow a bed and breakfast with six or more units, because it's specifically identified in the table of allowed uses. And it says, it breaks it up, bed and breakfast, five or more units, or five or less units, or six or more units. The fact that it says six or more and then identifies the permitting requirements for that use tells us that you could potentially have a house with 20 bedrooms and have a bed and breakfast that has 20 rooms.
Yeah, that, that's right. So the difference between bed and breakfast inns and home share is two things. First is the number of rental units. Second is whether the meal is served or not.
Can't, can't the bed and breakfast seventeen point two eight point zero nine zero be meshed with the home share so that, that we get rid of the home share itself and put some of the terms of the home share into the bed and breakfast and seventeen point two eight point zero nine zero?
Well, I believe the current structure is good, because home share is probably considered incidental or ancillary use of residential. That's how we can allow them in all residential zones. B and B is too intensive, is not considered incidental or ancillary anymore. So they, they are, they're considered commercial use, that's why we need a CUP or minus CUP.
Conditional use privilege, you're saying?
B and Bs require that.
B and B requires that.
That's right.
Right.
Okay, let's move to Mr. Blackwell.
Just a quick question on the intent of the select residential zones. You were suggesting residential high or residential medium, why those two, not others?
Put your light, your light on, please.
I believe very strongly that we should protect and maintain the quality and character of our ones, sort of the single-family neighborhoods. I think, to me, that is one of the most important things that we can do as a zoning commissioners, is to protect those, those areas that have always been designated as single-family. The city council has designated STLUs as commercial businesses in residential areas. And if they're commercial businesses in residential areas, especially in R1, we shall prohibit them in those single-family neighborhoods.
Okay. Okay, you have nothing more at this time? Okay, Commissioner Ruland?
I think, I think you then made some, some good points. I think, you know, there is a, we are dealing with a continuum here, right? So things kind of graduate, there tends to be some gray areas, but, you know, serving, serving a breakfast, if that was the only difference, it's sort of like, well, maybe there needs to be some, make sure we have some kitchen, you know, some proper regulations to run the kitchen, but otherwise, it could be an STLU. But the fact that we can rent to multiple parties, I think, is, is an important difference. It starts, it seems to me anyway, it starts to move into more hotel management rather than kind of sharing my home or, or letting my home out for a visitor. And, you know, you have to draw the line somewhere, and that seems like a pretty good place because of that difference in terms of how many different parties can be there and potential conflicts between the parties and that sort of a thing. So for those reasons alone, I, unless, unless there, someone could explain why that's not kind of a material, you know, difference between the two, I, I would hesitate to lump them together. But in addition to that, I, it's funny, I both agree and disagree with you on the R, on the R1 areas. I agree about preserving the area, the residential areas, the neighborhoods. It's in our, it's the first things listed in our land use of our general plan. But I don't see anything in our general plan that preserves those areas as, as, that should be preserved and other areas, you know, residential medium, residential high, should not be preserved. So if it's a, if it's a compatible use in one area, for the most part, it's going to be compatible use in another area. And if it's not a compatible use in one area, it's probably not going to be a compatible use in the other area. So, so those are the, those are the, actually, two, and breakfast is not so much of an issue. But those other two issues are the things that would need to be addressed for me to, to support having this, lumping B and Bs together with STLU's at this time.
You've been pretty consistent about protecting the RM and RH areas, I guess. It's been, you've been consistent over the last three months, we've been talking about this.
I've been consistent that we should be treating these areas substantially the same. So that, you know, I mean, there's obviously going to be some differences in, in things, but the people should be treated, you know, if we're protecting neighborhoods, we should protect all neighborhoods, which is what the general plan says to do.
Mr. Crandall?
Yeah, I, I was the one who brought this up at the previous meeting about what was the difference between home share and bed and breakfast. I don't see that there's a big difference, but it just came to mind, home share will be limited to 90 days a year because, no?
No, it was.
That's what I want to find out. Because if it's not, then I don't see a big difference.
Well, one thing I would say, there's a couple of fundamental differences in terms of the standards, you know, things like bed and breakfast inns kind of are always bed and breakfast inns, where a home share, you can be on and off again, however you please. It's kind of more of a relaxed kind of a use. People, they only do it for the summer. Some people might do it all the time. It'll vary from use to use. The parking standards, there's a, there's a, in here, I was looking at the standards, there's a, a density standard of one guest unit for every 500 square feet. There's the food service requirement, which you're also talked about. The parking standard is one parking space per unit and this, and two for the, for the resident, which is similar to what you guys were discussing. Just to let you know, based on the standards you've adopted, the number of permits, the existing permits that would qualify for that is 65. And that's even, that's not even without including the development standards you've incorporated, which might reduce that number even more. So we've gone from 509 to 65. And then remainder of the area, the home stay, the idea was, well, maybe that'll help with the coastal commission. But if you start to add these bed and breakfast standards to the way they're written here to, to the home stay, that's going to blow it out of the water. You're not going to get any, I mean, look at how many bed and breakfast inns we have in town now. It's very difficult to incorporate them. So unless we, I mean, I like the idea, if you want to follow the same zoning pattern as bed and breakfast, but keep the, you know, the home stay standards separate, I think that would be better because of these nuances. We're creating bigger problems and difficulties in order to allow them. I think that we want to really encourage them in the zones where we have decided to allow them, you know, so the mixed-use zones and these other tourist-oriented areas. So we don't want to put prohibitions, kind of an effective, unintentional prohibition by the standards that we're developing. So I'm worried about that.
Could a bed and breakfast in, in the right location, call themselves a home share? The only difference being right now is you can only rent one room, or have one renter. That would be the only difference. Whether you serve them a muffin and a cup of orange juice in the morning, you know, that's considered a meal and that's, you know, continental breakfast is hardly, needs a commercial kitchen.
The answer to that, the nuanced answer to that is no, because you have these, you know, single rental agreements versus if you have five rooms, you could have five different rental agreements.
Well, that's why I say that's right now, the only difference.
Yeah, well, and there's also requirements for CCNRs and serving food and a really rigorous parking standard, allowing a sign to be placed on the property. So there's a variety, they're not big differences, I agree, but they are different. And they're different enough that it's really hard to do a bed and breakfast inn in most locations in town. There's not that many, that's why we don't have that many now. And that fact concerns me that we're not going to be able to reach the threshold that will get this approved through the coastal commission.
No, I understand that.
So I like the idea of separating it and not, if you, if you, as a group, you know, feel that, you know, it's very similar to bed and breakfast, so it should follow the same zoning pattern as the bed and breakfast, I think that's great, if you want to do that. But just lumping the two together, I prefer that not to happen because I think that would cause, even just the definition of lumping them together would cause problems with the coastal commission.
It just seems, taking the logic we took on all of this, saying, what is the impact to the neighborhood? And I don't see a whole lot of difference in impact to the neighborhoods between a bed and breakfast and a home share. They basically have the same impact. And requiring them to meet different standards just seems out of sorts a little to me. But if they're in the same zone and you can opt for the, to be either or, that would probably satisfy that concern, I think.
So I'm just, you're, I'm confused. Now, you get either or, home share or B and B?
It seems that they would be compatible in the same zones.
So we treat them the same?
They have a slightly different, I mean, then we have two things that are very close together, but, okay, I guess that...
I'm a little, so you're saying, treat a B and B like a home share or a home share like a B and B?
No, I'm kind of agreeing with Petch that they have some nuances about each of them. They're substantially the same nuances, so possibly they could occur in the same zones.
And so what's, what direction could the city planner use with that to create something that could be...
Would actually help, it would help us as far as complying with, I believe, coastal, having both options.
You could give, I think that it's, you know, we weren't, we haven't prepared for this item tonight to give you, you know, a lot of, you know, background and information and studied it. So I think at this point, I think the best thing we'd do is to direct us, and what we bring back to you as a group, to include these, you know, options. We could, you know, include an option that treats, from what I'm hearing, treats, you know, a home stay type of use to similar, in the similar zones of the bed and breakfast. And I hear kind of a mixed message between the group and whether you all agree on that, but that would be one thing that we can do. Or any other nuance, I think trying to come up with the exact answer tonight probably isn't a good idea because we aren't prepared.
Right.
But to give us direction to look at it, we can absolutely include it in our analysis that comes back to you in the staff report.
Next meeting.
Commissioner Schnezen.
Thank you. I think, first of all, before we discuss this in any more detail, I think we really need to get some concrete definitions here, black and white definitions, excuse me, with all the nuances put there. I've been listening to that and nobody here is saying, I understand this. And I think that's really unfair, that we don't know what the difference between these two animals are. And I think, excuse me, I think it's imperative that we do. We have to know exactly what those nuances is, whether it's number of people staying there, whether or not it's breakfast, whether it's parking, whatever. But I see a huge difference personally between one person rental in a house versus a B and B. And I would say to Commissioner Crandall, I can't understand how you would say they're the same thing. I would say that's a big difference. I've stayed in B and Bs a lot in my life, and there's a lot of people that stay in B and Bs. And it has traffic and it has a whole different dimension of issues than one person staying in a house. And I think we better get this clear, because if we're muddled in this, we're not going to know the right thing to do. And I'll tell you what I'm really concerned about. I'm really concerned about developing a, an initiative here that we fall in love with and we don't really understand it, only to find out that now people have houses with, with people coming in and out every other day because that's, that's house sharing. And we get back to the same old problems, with people not knowing what's going on, people coming in, people going out, and on top of it. I would ask you to consider this, how are you going to enforce this? How are you going to know that the owner's in that house? You're not going to know. You are not going to know. B and B, you've got some real controls. This home sharing, you don't. And I think you're, you're mixing up two completely different animals. I think you better lay it out so that it makes some sense so that we can get our arms around it, because I can't. I don't know how many days you can do this for. I don't know how many people you can do this. I don't see the similarities. I don't know if there's a muffin there. I don't know. But I know what B and Bs are. And I don't want a B and B next to my house all of a sudden because it's the same thing. And I'm sure that a lot of people in this community feel the same way. So I think we'd better get that to basics here, define these things, because all of a sudden, they popped up on the agenda that, that weren't there before. We were talking about short-term residential renting of homes. And now, all of a sudden, we're talking about B and Bs and house sharing and so on and so forth. So let's kick back a notch, let's get prepared for this discussion, let's lay it out and clear, you guys do such great charts where you go, this is this and this is this, and this is what you can do, and this is what you can do. So we can really see it, because we may agree to it or we may not agree to it. But right now, I'm, I don't know, and I'm sensing that fellow commissioners don't know exactly what we're talking about, so...
Okay, thank you for your input. The last time we met, there were six of us here and we all voted, in the way that the vote went, six zero, was to agree with staff's proposal for home sharing in all areas and then STLU's only and the visitors serving in mixed-use zones, minus 3.2, which is neighborhood serving. And the reason that was a compromise, I think we all bought into, six oh, last week, was the city planner's right, we have the coastal commission concerns we have to deal with. There is a visitor-serving overlay that we approved in our land use plan that was, that we approved before Commissioner Wu and Black, you guys came aboard. There's a whole overlay in the coastal zone, there's a visitor-serving chapter there. And so there's always men that, that need to satisfy that requirement that we're a coastal town. If we were a town like Mission Viejo or Lake Forest inland, this would not be an issue. We have, we have that 3,000-foot area where the coastal commission has some legal jurisdiction and we, that's, that's the one big animal that's on our back. It's just part of the turf that we're with. That's why there's never been any easy decisions here. That's why we could never get consensus. Mr. Ruhl says if R1 is good, then RM and RH has got to be protected too, because he lives in RM and he's got 701 on his street and I can certainly respect that. But then again, there's the hard choices you make when you are in a coastal zone in that coastal area. And we're in a coastal town and we have the California Coastal Act to deal with. We try to protect R1s and maybe with dispersion and geographical separation, integrate some of these numbers in R2 and R3. I'm going to tell you right now that when our land use plan goes to coastal commission and there's only 65 left, it's not going to get approved, just the way it is. I mean, that's reality. It's, every once in a while, you got to make some really tough decisions, you know? And it's not what you think about it, it's not what you feel about it, it's what you know. You know, it's what, you know what you have to do to make these various competitions balance. And somehow, we have to make hard decisions here and we have never been able to get a consensus of four of us on the same page to make the hard decisions. And that's where we're at. We've got two that say, don't zone it anywhere, two or three that say, zone, protect R1, let's take a look at RM, RH in the coastal zone, one that says, RM and RH are just equals R1.
We do have a consensus, that's the first thing you mentioned.
But the first consensus we do have a week ago was home sharing everywhere and STLU's in the other zones. And that was a balance to acknowledge the fact that we are a coastal town and we have a coastal zone. So that's kind of a summary there, where we're at.
Just, I wanted to add, when we do the home share, we, we require a discretionary permit for that because of being in these zones, when it's outside of the zones that you establish.
That's correct.
For the STLU's to be allowed.
The guidance we gave to staff was that would, you'd need the STO business permit, you'd need an STO zoning permit or something from, from city staff or community development, and that would have a discretionary review, was the guidance we gave last week. That's, that, that is a thing that kind of placates, and everybody bought into it except you who were absent, Commissioner Smith, the fact that we have a reality of the coastal zone that's in our land use plan and is, it's there. And so that's where we're at. That's kind of my summary of where we're at. So we have concession and direction to staff. So let's go, one more? We have lights all over the table. I'm going to wrap this up really quick. We're going to go to a vote and then we're going to be done. This is not agenda.
Did you ask staff for a clear definition between the two to make that decision?
Yeah.
And where is it?
We, we had defined home, home share right here and home exchange.
But in home share, it doesn't really say here specifically how many bedrooms they can rent for home sharing, does it? Or maybe I'm not looking at this correctly.
This, this definition of home share, home exchange and short-term lodging units, there are things that, that are consistent about these three terms. And so there is an asterisk after a couple of these items because the...
Can you just answer me that question? How many rooms in a, in a home share can be rented out?
Well, that's, so we're looking at how many rooms in a home share?
Maximum five.
Maximum?
No, no, you...
Now Sid, even they don't even know.
No, no, the home share...
Well, the number, any number, as long as there's a one rental agreement.
Yeah, it's just one rental agreement. The maximum on the, how many bedrooms you can have is going to come down to probably parking and total occupancy of the site.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute here. Home share, that people that I've known before don't have one rental agreement, okay? People that I've known who have done home sharing have in fact rented out two or three rooms to different people, and that's not one rental agreement. That's multiple rental agreements. So you're thinking about renting out a home share to have two or three bedrooms to, for one, for one application or one rental agreement? That's not reality. That doesn't happen.
Okay, now, it may not happen now simply because we're not, we're not zoning that use. We give somebody a vacation rental permit and then they just rent to whoever they want. We don't have those standards in place. We haven't identified the use in the zoning ordinance, we haven't specified. So what we're doing now is we're specifying what can happen. And what we're going to do is say you can have one rental agreement at any given time in a home share.
That's the intention of what you tend to define and bring to us in two weeks.
That's what we're doing now.
Right, the direction you got from a week ago.
Yes. So if people are doing that now, then that's not going to comply.
So if someone has a home share and they have three bedrooms, they can only rent out one of those bedrooms at any one time?
No.
No, they could rent out one bedroom, two bedrooms, or three bedrooms, but they, however many they rent, all have to be in the same rental agreement.
See, again, that is not what I understand as home sharing from the people that I have talked to here in San Clemente.
Well, the direction we gave staff a week ago was redefine it.
Okay.
To redefine that.
Well, let's, let's, because we have a lot of discussion here with regard to what the definition is, that's why I asked for these definitions. And in the definition of home share that we received, it doesn't say that because people will not, because these people rent out multiple rooms in their home, they don't rent it to one family, they rent it to multiple people. That's the way that home sharing works. It doesn't say that they, that a family's going to rent three, three bedrooms in that house. That doesn't work.
Okay, so there's two things on that. If, if that's the case and the commission feels that that's, that simply restricting a home share to one rental agreement is not going to take care of that issue of multiple rentals, then we need to address that specifically. But keep in mind that home shares that are outside of the zones where STLU's are allowed are going to go through a discretionary process. We're going to have conditions of approval, the conditions of approval are going to be standard, and they're all going to say things to that effect.
That was the direction we gave last week.
So there... So, there, if people then decide to break the conditions, the permit is revocable, it's much more, it's not a conditional use permit that runs with the land, it runs with the operation of the business.
We need to update our, when we come back, we need to update the definition of a home share that states exactly that, I think, compared to what's here.
And that, I can, I can put that in the definition. It isn't contained in the zoning ordinance special uses section that discusses the legal operation of these uses.
Okay. Commissioner Black, you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you. Okay. For sanity here, we've already established that the STU's are, are going to be acceptable in visitor-serving areas, that's been defined. We're now talking about exceptions, so areas outside of the visitor-serving areas. And we're looking at two specific types of STU's, still STU's, okay? And we're considering a, an exception because we, some of us believe that the internal functionality is a little different. So, it's worthy of an exception. I would just caution that to the outside world, the behavior is still a short-term, it's still an STU. Commissioner Smith made a very good point, because it's, it's really how it's going to behave within these communities, within these neighborhoods. Folks are going to come and go, you know, whether or not there's a homeowner on-site or not, it's still going to behave the same way. So, we, I'm happy, and I'm comfortable with, with the fact that there would be some discretionary application or some discretionary review. As long as there'd be a buffer, I think it's, it's something that we, we might consider. If there's a reasonable buffer, a separation, it still achieves that, that balance. But I also caution us in, in considering only select residential zones to Commissioner Wu's point, I really, for the same reasons we want to protect in R1, we really need to protect the other residential zones. It's important. We have families that live in all densities of residential zones. So, I just don't see the difference. I don't, I just can't, can't go with that. So, I want to put that out there for discussion. And I also have, for legal, I have a question, so I'll, I'll, I'll wait a minute.
As he's coming back.
Tried to, tried to stretch that out as long as I could. We did receive, we received a letter from a Mr. Chuck Billy. I received the letter today, and I believe the rest of the commission received that letter. Did you have a chance to, to review that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have not seen that letter.
Okay, just came in. There was, there was a sentence in the letter that got me to thinking a little bit. And that sentence was that, that this might amount to a partial taking under eminent domain. Okay. So, what I'd like to know is if, maybe, if not tonight, at some point during this discussion, if we can get a clear understanding of eminent domain versus inverse condemnation as it relates to, to this. And whether or not these may or may not relate to potential taking, what we're doing here, and, and how, what the differences are. If you could just elaborate on that, clarify it, so that we're clear on the fact that we are not in fact taking property from folks. Somebody comes into town, they buy a parcel of land, they go to the planning department, and the planning department says this is a commercial zone, you can put a, you know, a toy store on it, fill in the blank, whatever that is. You know, a couple months later, we decide, you know, we don't want toy stores in that zone anymore, so we ban toy stores. Okay. So, that's, that's how I'm thinking about this, and I'd like some clarification on that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the, the term that should have been used in that letter is inverse condemnation as opposed to eminent domain or condemnation. The difference, of course, is that condemnation is a power held by the city where they can go and condemn property for public purposes. Of, of course, that's not being done here. The, the argument, I'm assuming, that's being made in that letter is that this is a regulatory taking, where a city through regulations is depriving allegedly a property owner of all significant economic value, their property. We discussed this maybe two, two and a half months ago, when we first began discussing this issue. The test for whether a property has suffered a regulatory taking is nuanced. But to put it in a really tight nutshell, it comes down to whether the regulate, the regulation deprives the property of, of most if not all of the economic value and the, the investment-backed expectations of the property owner. Now, there are, there are factors that are at play here that go into that test. For example, the amortization period, which we've been discussing, whether or not after the regulation goes into effect, there's still some viable economic use to be put to the, the land. Here, there certainly would be. Those are factors that, that would be at play if in fact this, this were litigated. We feel confident that if there is a reasonable amortization period put in place, because there remains fairly significant economic use of the, the property remaining for each of these properties, that there would not be any liability for the city in inverse condemnation.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Wu, you've been waiting patiently.
A few comments I'd like to give to the planning staff. I think right now, we have a very good framework. We allow STU use in the designated areas, and we don't allow them in other areas. Now, the planning staff just did a reality check and found out there's only 65 units within that coastal zone, within that allowable areas. So, then we throw in exceptions, for example, home sharing, as we agreed at last time. There are other items I'd like the staff to consider, so we can draw a line, where is the right line? We can have just enough to satisfy the coastal commission. Now, how about second unit? Second unit has two types. Attached to second unit is up to 30% of the main residence. Detached second unit is up to 1,200 square feet. Now, what should be allowed, what should not be allowed? We're clear here on the definition that in a multifamily structure, each unit will be treated differently, we're clear here. But the second unit is not clear, not yet. And also, in our zoning, we have an item called a guest house. It doesn't have a definition. You know, what is a guest house? Should a guest house to be allowed to, to be used as a short-term rental? I think duplex will probably be treated the same way as a multifamily structure here. If it's not, we would like to get clarification on that. And so, we put all these exceptions in, and eventually, we have come to a point that we feel comfortable, that if we presented that package to coastal commission, it'd have a decent chance to pass. So, Mr. Petcher, so you said 65 is not going to pass, but what, what is the number in your mind that you think that you have a good chance?
I'm not saying, I can't tell you for sure that 65 won't pass, but it's sounding very close to a prohibition based on the numbers we have now, that's...
I would agree. But what is in your mind? What do we need? 500, 2,000?
I think we just need to have a reasonable ability to accommodate, you know, one of the things that isn't mentioned there out of the 65 is you also have capacity in those zones to grow. So, that's, even with that capacity to grow, which we haven't really calculated what that might be, there's also, I think, just a quick drawdown, in two years, it's going to go down to 65, maybe a little bit higher if some new ones come in. That would be a tough pill for the coastal commission probably to swallow, you know? I can't guarantee anything. And whatever the, you know, whatever the community decides, we're going to, you know, move forward with, and, and we'll see what happens. But my, my thought was what you guys were originally going with last meeting, had a good chance.
Yeah.
And I even had a discussion with the coastal commission, and they thought that I might have a good chance too.
That's why we agreed to it, six, seven.
So, having the, the home share in the larger zone, whether, whether you put it in R1 and R, well, single-family residential, medium density and high, or if you just, if you want to pull it back a little bit from single-family, I hear some of you saying, and some of you might agree and do, so that, that, that might work too. But I think that a little bit, the two combined makes a reasonable argument in dealing with also our community issues. And like I said before, the coastal commission is made up of, many of them are representatives like yourself from cities, and they have the same problem in their cities, so they're, they're sympathetic to the problem. And so, the coastal commission's kind of balanced on this issue. So, if we make a good argument that seems to be fair, where we actually try to provide some, but we also address them and put standards and regulations on them and, and limit them in certain circumstances, that will probably be a fair way to go. I don't think there's a number. Like, if we have 300, you're okay, and if we have 299, you're not.
I, I think it's a good structure to go with. It's just a few items on a borderline, we need to clarify what, what is, which is on what side, such as a, a second unit or guest house, et cetera.
Commissioner Eggleston, you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, you mentioned that this was not agendized, but STU's were agendized. And because of a, of a urgency-type situation, which I considered, that's why I brought it up and I got a second. And so, we did move forward. So, I just want to be sure that the people out in the audience that's at home know that, knows that this was agendized. So, I, I think it's, I, I would like the staff, when they come back to, whenever we meet again, to really go through with us on a process of how you're going to approve home sharing, bed and breakfasts, and home exchanges. And, and what that review is, are you going to be visiting the house? Are you going to be, what are you going to be doing? Because I think that's very important out there for us to know what that process is, because there's can be, there can be a lot of loopholes in this whole thing. I'd like, if in fact the home exchange definition here is correct, I think that's fine, because it says here, in which the owner occupies one another's property during the short, same short-term period of time. Because if that's the case, that's, that's home exchange. It's not that someone takes a vacation and then rents it out to three or four different people. And that needs to be clarified in there, because that's important, because a home exchange can turn into a STU very quickly. And you said, you know, that there's, we don't really know about the active or the inactive STU's right now in the community. We don't know that. And inactive, I mean, they haven't paid in the last year, for example. We don't know that. I understand that it could be more than half of the 500 that are considered to be inactive at this point. So, when we talk about the coastal commission and say that, well, we have 500 now, or they going, you know, we should have 500 in the future, that's not necessarily true, for the simple reason that there are a lot of inactive STU's right now out there, because they haven't operated, they've just taken out registration forms, they haven't paid their TOT. And the last thing I have here is that I'm a firm believer that we cannot treat every area in the city the same. That's why we have zoning. That's why we have land use. And that's part of our jobs here as planning commissioners, to take a look at zoning and land use in different parts of the city, and to protect those areas, especially R1, so that in fact, those are, those are protected. Those are our, our, our single-family neighborhoods. And yes, there are, there are single-family neighborhood, there are single-family residents in residential medium, residential high. But the mix is a lot more. The mix is condos, apartments, and, and single families. And that's where the mix comes in. And that's where we have to treat things differently as, as, as planning commissioners. I'm not so concerned here with regard to the coastal commission. What I'm concerned here is that we have to do the right thing for our residents and the right things for this community. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Wu, you've been patiently waiting.
Okay. Few things. I hit my button for one thing, and some things have been added. I want to, one thing I want to do is make sure I understand the 65-unit number that you've come up with. Is that, are you saying that if we took what we had been talking about last week with the visitor-serving areas and the owner-occupied STU's and all the residential areas, that based on our conversation there and the sorts of constraints we have on them, we would end up with 65 units after that point? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, yeah, more or less, that the area, the geographic area that you picked, there's 60, well, there's actually 73 STU's within that area. And two of those happen to be large projects where we'd have to dial back the number allowed, so that reduces it by eight more, which gets us down to 65.
I see. But that's only the visitor-serving areas you're talking about. You're not talking about how many would be in the, how many owner-occupied would be in the residential areas?
Yeah. And we don't have the data on how many owner-occupied STU's or, or calling home-share uses are there out there. We don't have that data. We don't know how many there are. But if we were to retain that whole kind of coastal area, there, there might be a few. I think mostly in the, there's a couple of people that I know came up and testified that said that are in that circumstance. So, I know that there's probably, especially in the medium-density residential, there's a few of those. We have no way to quantify it at this point in time. But at least the abilities there, you know, a lot of this is going to be based on capacity. You know, I, I think ultimately, the city has, you know, to Wayne's point, the city has to decide what they want to do. I'm just reminding you that there's coastal commission out there, that's our hurdle. But ultimately, you do the right thing for the community, and then we deal with the coastal commission, and they'll give us feedback, and we'll come back to you if there's, needs to be changes.
But, but we're, but we're talking about going from 70-some in the visitor-serving areas. If, that, the way it stands, if just conforming to the standards that we put out, in the visitor-serving areas only, we go from 70-some to 65. Because that doesn't seem like that big of a drop to me, and those other ones could, could become conforming by providing the appropriate parking or whatever the issue is, right?
Well, in, in the zone itself, it's not necessarily a big drop, because we're allowing them there. So, yeah, no, there's not a big drop there, there's this loss of eight units based on...
But then, but then we also have the...
The one standard we applied. We didn't apply the other standards yet, so we don't know.
But then we have the owner-occupied in the rest of the residential areas, so that...
Which is an unknown number.
And we don't know that number, right. But, but the, I, I'm kind of, I'm kind of with Wayne, that the coastal commission, they don't give us any guidance, and they don't tell us how much is enough. So, we're, we're doing a bit of guessing, and we do, like you say, what's appropriate to the city, what's going to support the city?
I think if the, if the city and where the planning commissioner's discussing it is doing a balanced approach, I think that that's, you know, a feasible thing that we can argue before the coastal commission, and, and they may agree.
Okay. Good. I just want to make sure I understood what, what that 65 number represented. The second thing is, is, you know, Wayne, and you clarified your point, I appreciate that on, on the differences, so, so allow me to clarify mine a little bit. The different, you're right, we have different zoning for different things, commercial, residential, you know, industrial, so we don't get, you know, rendering factor in a residential area for, to be hyperbolic about it. And certainly, you know, in, in various areas, medium versus low versus high, there's going to be different, some different standards in terms of, you know, building standards because we're building condos or what have you. But residential is also residential, in my eyes. You, you have neighbors. There, there's a quality to residential. You've got neighbors, someone next door, you talk over the fence to, you talk about what's going on in the neighborhood, you know, that big red truck is owned by your next-door neighbor, you recognize, you know, the woman who walks her dog down the street every day. Those are the characteristics of a neighborhood. And, you know, people are, that's where they go. When they say, "I'm going home," that's where they go. That's where they like to be after a long business trip, right? That's true whether you're in a high-density or low-density or wherever. So, that, that's the sense that I want to preserve. And so far, I haven't heard a compelling argument, at least to me, why these STU's make a, a difference, why they're, why they're compatible in this area but not in that area. And when I say that, you know, they need to be, people need to be treated substantially the same, that's, that's what I mean. And if there's a, if there's a compelling argument for it, I, you know, I, you know, I'm all ears, but I haven't heard yet. It's more of a, at least to my ears, I've heard, it's, it's more of a preference that people have. So, the last thing is, is I had a question about the definition, in the definition of home share that you put here. And it's not, at least the way it's written is not as I recall what we talked about, and I want to make sure I understand what you're going for here. You said that a home share does not apply to lodging units within multiple-family dwelling structure unless the home share owner resides in the unit being rented as a home share. So, when I read that, what I imagine is, is there's somebody in a duplex, and they, they own the duplex, and they live in one of the two units, and they rent, do a short-term rental on the other unit, and that's a home share, because they own it. And you're saying that that's not the case?
No.
Okay.
We talked about, the, last week when we discussed this, one of the, one of the options that we talked about was a multifamily building where the owner simply lives on-site and rents out the other units. That came from direction over the last couple of months, that it seemed that that's what we would consider a home share. And I, I, staff felt it was pretty clear last... it was pretty clear last week that that does not count as a home share, that the owner has to live in the unit that is being rented in order for that to count.
Well, let, let me ask. That would mean like, if someone has an apartment building with, you know, four apartments in it, for instance, if they lived in one unit, then he couldn't rent the others as a home share. And I'm just curious, what's the recollection, recollection or the preference of the other planning commission, commissioners when you come to a duplex or a quadplex?
I think we're getting way out of line here.
Just, just to, in defense of, of the staff-
Yeah.
This definitions were, these are really preliminary, and we haven't finished the work.
Okay, sure.
And so this is a work in progress, because I think that Adam and I see it a little bit differently. Because we have discussed, and maybe that would be a good clarification to get from the commission, would be, we've talked about it kind of in both circumstances, where the owner has to live in the unit, which is how you would definitely have to apply to a single-family residence, because there's only one unit. But with a multifamily, we did talk about people that lived in a duplex, and they own one unit, and they rent out the other, or a triplex, similar kind of thing. So if we could get clarification on that, we discussed previously that by having the owner on-site in a unit, that that addresses a number of the complaint issues, because you have somebody there that responds to the neighbors and has to live in the neighborhood, and is answerable to his, you know, buddy across the street when things don't go right. And then those have a tendency to be managed better. So with that, that idea, maybe you want to expand it for multifamilies, so.
That, that's kind of my thought. I, I agree with you that-
I could agree with that.
As long as they're living there, because then they're still a neighbor. If, if, for a, if, if someone didn't live there and they rented out the, the, those as STLUs, you know, that's more of a problem. But if someone lives there, exactly what you're saying, you know the people across the street, you know the people next door.
I see you shaking your heads. Could I have a committee?
Yeah, I think we're good there.
Does everybody agree?
Uh, no. No, I don't agree.
That's fast.
It's a slippery slope. You can own, whether the dwelling unit is attached or not, doesn't matter. If you buy your neighbor's house, you become owner of two houses. Can you live in one unit and rent out another unit? It's a continuously year-long. No, I don't think that's in print.
But it'd have to be on the same property.
Yeah.
Well, that's, with the multi-unit thing, you couldn't, you know, buy the, the duplex next door and live in one of them and rent out three units. It has to be within the same property.
Right.
I'm sure.
So if you live in a triplex on the same, it's all units are on the same property, one owner lives in one unit and rents out the other two units, that's okay. That's what we were discussing.
But how many units?
No, no, no.
Hold a minute. Mr. Crandall wants to-
Yeah. For home share, I was looking, okay, what's a solution for, let's say, R1? And one, if there's no kitchen, you're just renting a bedroom, it's not going to be a party house, and the impacts caused by that are far fewer. And that's a different animal than renting out complete living units with a kitchen, a yard, and everything. That becomes a party house. So I'm not comfortable saying in some zones, I think it's, it's different. The impacts to the neighbors are going to be huge. If you only have one bedroom that's being rented out by a homeowner, to a guy who came in for the surf contest, that's a whole lot different than renting out a complete dwelling unit and the amenities in the backyard, et cetera. So I see a whole big difference between that and duplex. But in the lower-density ones, what's the lowest density that allows a second dwelling unit or a guest house? I think you've got to go all the way up to RM, or?
No. Residential allows both guest houses and second residential dwelling units. There's a restriction on second residential dwelling units in residential low, west of the, west of the freeway.
Right. Well, that's kind of what we're talking about. What's the restriction there? You can have the second, a complete second dwelling unit?
Not west of the freeway.
Excuse me?
Only east of the freeway.
Oh, east. Okay. So I, I see a big difference when we're talking the extra units with, that are complete dwelling unit versus a room rental. Big difference.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I keep hearing over, over from everybody here on this stage that everybody has a different idea about what this is. And I get the impression that you guys are kind of playing it by ear, and all of a sudden it's an apartment building, and it's okay to rent out all the other apartments, because the owner lives there. Excuse me. That, that's not the same thing. That's completely different. And this is why, I'm going to say for the record again, we need to establish clear, definable definitions that we can understand, and we can point to, and we can go, "No, you can't do that. You can't take a fourplex and live in one and rent the other three." People here don't know the difference, because we're all talking in circles. But finally, I want to say that Commissioner Eggleston is absolutely right. The bottom line here is that we, we have to protect the citizens of this community, and we have to watch out for the people that live in these residential areas. And we better not throw the baby out with the bathwater, because that's what I'm feeling tonight.
Okay, we're kind of going around in circles here, but we kind of-
Okay, Mr. Chair, can we get a, just to, just to get a feeling, can I get a gauge on whether you want to stick with the existing definition, the way it's written, where you have to live in the unit in order to do a home share? Or do you want to extend it to a multifamily, where you just need to live in one of the units on the same property?
Let's have a straw voter.
Can I say something before that? That there are, you know, there are some very good operators out there, and that have a triplex, or a fourplex, and live in one of the units, and rent out one or two or three other ones. So that, we need to keep, keep that in consideration. Now, am I for that or not? I, I can't tell you at this point. But, but I, I know that, that there has to be some sort of impact. But there are some very good operators that do that out there right now. So that was my question all along with regard to the fourplexes and the triplexes. How are we going to handle those? And I'm glad that you're bringing that up again.
Okay. Do you, does staff have some ideas coming back to us about how to handle those issues?
Well, you know, Commissioner Smith wants us to be clear with the definition. In order for us to be clear with the definition, we need to know what you want.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, I mean, we can write two definitions, I suppose.
Most of these definitions, I thought, were pretty good, from what we agreed to last time.
We're trying to get to a conclusion.
Well, we don't have definitions for fourplexes.
I, I like your definition of a home sharing. The only thing we would add is to, not to serve near, because if you serve near, it becomes in bed and breakfast, that's all. Home share means sharing a home. That's pretty clear to me, and I agree with that.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Black?
Thank you. Jim, did you happen to have that discussion with Coastal about having some benefit from the campground? We talked about that at the last meeting. I know it's out of our, it's state land, but it's sandwiched. It's-
That's, that's not really part of the same issue.
No.
I mean, it's overall about low cost of visitor accommodations, and that counts toward that aspect, but not this particular issue.
Okay.
I mean, they look at everything in the balance. I don't know, I wouldn't count on that as Wayne, and as a, you know, the solution.
Okay.
Okay, so everybody's, we've gone for about an hour and 10 minutes on a 10-minute agendized thing. We had a good debate again. We're still in various, going in various directions. We do have some pretty good definitions here, I think. We voted on it 6-0 last time for home sharing. I know there's some people in R1 are not happy with that. I'm not either. I kind of agree with Commissioner Eggleston. We need to do some good zoning here. And unfortunately, other people feel that it's, we don't have consensus. So you have to, you know, live with the reality here, and what's, what's, what's possible. We voted 6-0 last time for the home share issue. I think maybe with Mr. Wu's, in addition to no meals, we should go forward to that. That's what we have consensus off, because we certainly don't have consensus tonight on the other areas, particularly in the coastal element. And if the Coastal Commission likes it, we're okay. If not, we go back to work. I kind of agree with the city planner that 65 units or 70 units is just a, not quite there. It's a good question, how, what, when is it better than to be a good enough? But, you know, I think that's where we're at. And so let's, let's move forward with this, and we've hashed this out enough, and we're flogging a, you know, kind of a dead bear here. So, Mr. Crandall?
I, I will just say, for home share, whether you feed the guy or not, shouldn't even be in the, in the conversation. It really makes no difference if you've rented out a bedroom and you invite the guy to dinner. I mean-
Thank you. Thank you. You know, there is one consideration there. When you, when you're being paid to provide a meal, there are certain Orange County Healthcare Agency requirements for the kitchen. They're typically, that it's more of a commercial-grade kitchen, which then starts to-
Grade A, B, C.
-trickle down into more of a commercial use of the site, which is one of the things that is spelled out in the bed and breakfast section, which is why we look at that as more of an intensive service use, more so than, than a, a, a home share or an STLU, as, as Commissioner Wu was.
I'll, I'll grant you that, but I don't think it's enforceable.
Okay, let's, originally, we agendized bed and breakfasts in RM and RH for consideration and discussion. I guess let's just go vote on it, and we'll move on. Do you have something, Bernie, you need to talk about?
It's burning, only because I got to remind everybody up here, we're talking about land use up here. This is zoning, okay?
That's right.
Land use. So what is, does anybody, does everybody up here understand what that is? I'm assuming so, right, we're planning commissioners. So-
We do.
Let's, let's be mindful of behavior, okay, and how we're looking at this through these glasses. This is a land use when we're talking about one zone versus another, and zoning it this or that way. To Commissioner Roulin's point, residential is residential. It's just really about density. How many, how much can you fit on one parcel? The behavior is still going to be a residential behavior. Very important, got to keep that in mind, gentlemen.
Well, yes, we do. But sometimes you have to take a look at M and H, and where it's located. If it's in the coastal zone, that's a, that's not really a preference, it's just kind of, that's where it's at, you know? It's, that's where the hard decisions get made. With that, we'll cut off debate. I do have one card, and we'll open public debate, and then we'll close it. Mr. Janus? And I'm assuming you're from the city of St. Clemente?
Yes, sir.
So I can add that on the card, because a lot of our notes here, we don't know a little bit.
That was the last time we heard him.
Well, I'm a little confused, and I, I know you guys are too. And I don't, everybody that said something makes a lot of sense, but it's just a real tough issue we're dealing with, and we know that. The definition of all of those together is that they're money-making businesses. I mean, that's what they are, and they're our neighborhoods. If I wanted to run a dog kennel in my backyard, or have a horse, I'm not going to be able to, because it's land use. They, they won't let you do that. But these timeshare, I mean, these vacation rentals have snuck into our neighborhood, so we're trying to figure out what to do about it. Our group, Protect Our Neighborhoods, got to think about the suggestion about home shares in R1 areas. And I kind of agree with the two guys over here, that no one should have to put up with these things in their neighborhoods. They're really hard to live next to. I think that home shares will be just another operating business in our, in our neighborhoods, and I think they're going to have to be monitored by the neighbors again. And it'll be, it'll be really confusing trying to enforce the rules on them. You know, bed and breakfasts aren't allowed in Southwest, as you guys know. And they're more stringent than would be home shares. Home shares will have, the one across from me will have 14 people sleeping there. And I've talked to people in other cities that have tried to have owner-occupied, and you go over and check, oh, they're, they're not here right now. Oh, they'll be back at such and such time. It doesn't work that way. These are big businesses, and these guys are making a lot of money on this, and they do figure out loopholes on what they're going to do. And then we talked about the amortization of maybe two years, you guys discussed. They're businesses, and people don't book more than a year in advance. And if they do, they can show you where they have, and you can let them rent that long. But they don't. And if we're trying to appease investors from out of town, I think we're going the wrong route about this. I think one year is the most we should go on that. And then you talked about one contact, or one contract for the home, the home shares. They may have one contract, but there's four or five families that come on it. We're single-family dwellings, and we have four and five families living there most of the year. And then I have a question about Coastal. I don't know how that works. But shouldn't we just present to Coastal the minimum that we have, the visitor-sharing areas, and let them tell us, "No, that's not enough"? Why should we go say, "Hey, you know, we're going to do this and this," and try to make them, because we don't know what they're going to say? So, I don't know. I think you all had a lot of good stuff to say, and it's just a confusing issue. And I'm kind of confused still too. So, anyhow.
Thank you. Susan Nelson from St. Clemente?
Hi again. I just had a question about the amortization. If it's been decided that it's not going to be allowed, but we're going to have an amortization of 18 months or two years, if it's not allowed, it shouldn't be allowed now. It just seems like, you know, if the law is you drive 65 miles an hour, in the CHP, it forces the law. But some people start driving 80, and then more and more people drive 80, because no one's really stopping this. And then you all of a sudden say, "Oh, well, we're going to really start enforcing this in two years." That just doesn't make sense to me. That's just why I was trying to figure that out. That's all.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing.
And, Mr. Chair, could we have the city attorney maybe address the last comment to clarify why we're talking about amortization and why it might be important?
Make your computer easier to use.
Uh, Mr. Chair, commissioners, yeah, it's a, it's a good question. The zoning law works a little bit differently than, than your standard laws, like speed limits. The, the baseline law, the, the accepted law is that when a use that was previously permitted in a zone becomes non-permitted through a, a change in the zoning, that becomes illegal non-conforming use. And the, the baseline is that that, that, that use can remain in place for as long as it doesn't change in intensity, or in, in size, if you will. So a use that has become illegal through a change in zoning can remain indefinitely. There's a safety valve that's allowed by the courts, which is amortization. And that's the exception to the baseline rule, which allows for a city to put in place a time period during which that, that legal non-conforming use can operate, and after which it has to cease operation. And the time periods for amortization differ from use to use. They're very fact-specific. But again, when it comes to zoning, the baseline assumption is that a use will stay in place for as long as it keeps operating the way that it does. And it can only be eliminated by a city through an amortization process. It's different from other laws, like speed limits from criminal laws.
Thank you. Okay, let's, last time, we got something you light on for a reason?
I do. I do.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay. I'd like to ask Mr. Janus to come up, and I've, we've received a letter from the Protect Our Neighborhoods group, which Mr. Janus has already acknowledged that he is a part of. And we all received this letter. I've read through, I just had some questions since you're here. I'd like to-
Well, I hope I can answer. Trish, who's our in-house attorney, wrote that, as you can tell.
Oh, okay.
And she couldn't make it tonight. But I will try to answer what, if I can. I'll be honest with you, though.
Okay. Well, we'll just get through it then, and we'll do what we can. Okay, then a couple of these would probably need to be answered by here. Then we'll go straight to number five, and it, and it reads, "Commercial land uses goal to achieve and maintain commercial uses that are compatible with adjacent residential neighborhoods." And you say emphasis on "added." Can you, can you give me an idea what you believe compatible uses are within residential?
You know, residential neighborhoods?
Yeah. What, what other uses could possibly be compatible?
Long-term rentals.
But just long, that, that would be it. So it'd be compatible use, just one thing?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we feel.
Okay. And you didn't, there was no example, so I thought I'd ask you that. It's good to, to know where you're coming from there.
And in any, if, if the question you asked, asked me, I'll let her know how I answered it, and she will write back to you if I didn't do properly.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. And number six reads, "Commercial land uses policy entitled 'Neighborhood Compatibility, which requires that commercial projects abutting residential neighborhoods be designed and operated to protect residents from the effects of noise, light, odors, vibration, traffic, parking, and other operational impacts." Obviously, you're, you're aware that that's what we're talking about here. We're, we're trying to come up with a way to make it work via regulation. So special conditions, special provisions- special provisions that will help this use if we decide as a body to, to go forward with it, for these uses to work within the fabric of our residential zones.
So you're talking about putting rules and regulations on them so they'll work?
That...
See, well, that's, okay, we believe that's against...
That's, that's the point of the discussion. That's what we're trying to do up here.
Yeah, we do agree with that, but we, we think that you're neglecting what the general plan has said and also our Title 17 has said. On titles, there's a table in Title 17 that lists lodging, and that's under commercial. And, and STLUs are not even, are not even in that table. And it says if it's not in that table, that, then they're, they're not allowed to be in that area, they're prohibited. And then it goes on to say that there are other places that if you could find somebody that's like, a likes service or a like use, then you can consider that. But there are no like uses in our areas. You could say, well, maybe bread and breakfast, but that's not even allowed, allowed west of the five. So I guess our confusion is why the council and you guys have been directed to try and come up with ways to make these illegal businesses work in our neighborhoods, because, you know, they're, they're not legal there. So, and that's why I think it's so hard also to come up with parking, to come up with noise, to come up with everything, because they're not zoned for this particular area. And, and so that's where the, all the debate is and why I think it looks so confusing. And if we do go with certain codes and ordinances, we try and change it, if you think it's hard right now trying to come up with a decision, enforcing it's going to be terrible. You know, it's, there just had a little ruling by the city in favor of one of the STLUs, and Jim Laurent, who lives next to it, couldn't make it also last night, is, is beside himself because he sees what you guys are trying to do, and you guys are trying to help us, but it really doesn't. It just puts all the, the work on the neighborhood to try and take care of it. So that's how we feel about it. We think if you just stick by the general plan that we have now, any of that codes and ordinances, I think we'll have a lot less grief, and we could stop right now.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hope I plan okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I have just one quick thing. Jim was asking, he hasn't heard any good arguments with regard to why it should not be in R1s, and I just wanted to offer a suggestion here. There are thousands and thousands of single-family homes here in San Clemente and homeowner associations, and they prohibit them. They prohibit them because they want to maintain the character and quality of their single-family neighborhoods, thousands of them, so.
Okay, thank you. With the exception of Talega, who deferred their ordinance to ours. They're actually waiting us to get done. All right, we're done.
Can I make one more minor comment?
We're going to have to draw it into this. I know we have to, we keep going on, okay, you two, and then that'll be it.
Okay. The definition of home exchange, I see home exchange as incidental use of residential use. We can probably limit it to once a year or something like that, but occasionally, people do exchange their homes for whatever reason. Sometimes it's a short, short time for a vacation, sometimes it's a long-term arrangement. So I think to treat home exchange as a STLU is, is not right. It's not lodging, it's incidental use of a residential.
If you want to know our basis for simply saying that a home exchange is like an STLU, it's because we see a home exchange as one of the most unenforceable forms of short-term lodging. If I owned a short-term rental and I wanted to get around everything, if we allowed home exchanges, I would simply tell every single renter that if anybody comes here, you tell them that I'm at your house. And I could be on a round-the-world tour, constantly visiting other people's homes in exchange for them visiting mine, and the city would never have any way of really enforcing that. And that's just, we see that as such a massive loophole that there's really no good way to do it.
I agree.
Now, you've mentioned allowing a certain amount of time for something. There are some cities that do say, Monterey is an example, they, they actually ban short-term lodging units, but they allow any home to rent for a, for a short-term period, not to exceed 30 days in any calendar year. So every home can effectively have a home exchange, or they could go to a hotel and rent their home out for 30 days. There are options for, to allow, you know, to define a certain amount of time. I don't know how problematic that would be, but...
Well, I agree, it's very difficult to enforce, but if you put a cap on the number of time they can use, just say it a one time, it's probably, it's possible to enforce. But, but the difficulty to enforce is not a reason to, to define home exchange as a short-term lodging use.
At this point, staff is not, we don't have a, we don't have any limitations in place, as far as what we're considering now, on how much a home share could be, could be rented.
Okay, well, it's something that, next time, we want to hear back from you.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm still not understanding how this, these descriptions here are, are clear. And I'm going to point out the home share. The home share, as it's written here, is pretty clear to me that it's one unit with the owner living in that unit and sharing space within that unit. Now, I can buy that as a definition. What I can't buy is a four-plex with a guy living in one and renting out three. So I think there's a huge difference, and I don't see that as home sharing. And if other people think that's home sharing, then, then it's certainly a different definition that you have in front of me. And I am still uncomfortable here about not knowing what the heck we're talking about. But I would hang my hat on the home share definition that you have here is at least accurate, in my mind, and it's not renting out three other units of an apartment building or a triplex, what have you.
Okay. We have, we have not, have we given you guidance over the last three months we've been at this about those type of buildings? Do we, have you have enough to come forward with, coming back to us? Is that the last?
Well, no one ever, it would be helpful if you wanted to give us a straw vote on this issue, then we can put it to bed, or we can...
This is on the, okay.
Well, no, on this, just this issue with home share, whether it's included of multifamily units, where you live in one unit, or as we defined it, which is simply you have to live in the unit in order to share it.
Well, it's safe right here.
If not, we can just have, you know, in our hip pocket, the extra definition, and in, at the next meeting, you guys can vote on it. If you want to give us a straw vote now, great, we'll put it to bed.
Well, I, since I'm the one who brought it up, I, you know, Bart said some things that have gotten me thinking, and I'm very much sort of, you know, on the line about this now, and I, I wouldn't mind seeing an alternate definition in terms of what we talked about and discussing it more, you know, in the future. I'm just, I don't feel prepared at this point to say, you know, yes or no exactly on that tonight, so, that's my feeling.
So, is that enough guidance? Okay. Is there anything else? You want to vote on your B and B in residence?
No, I think that should be an option that the, that planning staff comes back with, but I wanted to find out when we are going to be meeting again. Do we need another meeting next week in order so that we can vote on this, at our regularly scheduled meeting again in March? Because I think there's a lot of revolving things going on here, and I'd hate it to come back with an ordinance that we do not have an opportunity to understand.
Well, I think we need to give staff enough time to work on.
Well, for some definitions, I think the staff could have enough time to work on something like that.
Right now, we're agendized to reconvene on the 16th of, of March, and as far as the city, city manager, city council, they're comfortable with the schedule we're on, and where there's no, far, that means that, or at least the council would get, this would be early April, is that correct? And that's, according to city manager and council, that's fine.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, there's no more discussion, enough, anymore, we have enough guidance. Let's make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have to continue the item?
Huh? We have to what?
Don't we have to continue the item?
We have to, yeah, I'm sorry, that's right, it's continue.
Then I will move, we continue this, this item to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
March 16th.
March 16th.
Have a motion to adjourn, continue, do I have a second?
Sir.
Mr. Smith, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes.
We have to adjourn.
Draft, options, draft, ordinance.
Don't we have to adjourn? All right, then, Mr. Chair, I'm going to move, we adjourn to the adjourned regular planning commission meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on March 16, 2016, in Council Chambers at City Hall, located at 100 Avenue, Prestidio, San Clemente, California.
Have a motion to adjourn, second, Mr. Crandall, all in favor? Aye.